The Westmont Village Board meeting of September 24th, 2020 to order at 6:00 PM. And ask Clerk Simmski for a roll call, please.
Mayor Gunther?
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Barker?
Here.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Guzzo?
Here.
Trustee Little?
Here.
Trustee Nero?
Here.
Attorney Zemanek?
Here.
Village Manager May?
Here.
And our Finance Director Parker?
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And I'd like to welcome everyone. This is one of the meetings I thoroughly look forward to and enjoy. But before we get to that report, open forum. I know that Manager May had a comment from someone in the public on an open forum. Do you just have one minute?
I do. And...
First of all, is anybody here who'd like to speak under open forum? Seeing none, then I'd ask Manager May to please read the...
Yeah. And if I, and I could, I wanted to explain something first in what we mean by open forum or public comment. And normally, in a, in a normal environment where everybody's at the board meeting, open forum is available to any member of the public that wants to come and address the village board on any topic that they want that's not on the agenda. And it's not that you can't speak about stuff that's on the agenda, it's just that you would do that at that time. But it's that opportunity to, you know, address the village board for anything that they want. When we got into this pandemic environment and these protocols and remote attendance, we immediately set up a format for the ability for public to enter public comment through the website on an online forum. There's also a voicemail box that can be used for the same purposes. And that's what this public comment is. Why am I describing this? One, the, we haven't had many, early on there were a few, and then recently it's been pretty quiet as far as public comment, but someone was communicating with, in this case, the Assistant Village Manager about an issue that they wanted to make the village board aware of, which we did make you aware of, but the, was disappointed that it wasn't read as public comment at the board meeting two weeks ago. And so that's what I'm describing. For purposes, it's the public comment at that meeting. There's a lot of ways to address the village board, whether, you know, email, voicemail, but the in-person way is what we're talking about tonight. So tonight I have one public comment. It is from Caroline Dunham of South Linden Avenue. And the comment is, "I ask that the village board give consideration and feedback to my concern/request. I am asking the village of Westmont give water billing discounts to residents during drought periods. We had a severe drought period recently. Water bills went sky high. We are required to maintain the appearance of our home, and maintaining the relevance of our grounds is equally important. We create an image of Westmont for people passing through and those looking for a home for purchase, an image of prosperity and attractiveness. Watering our plants and trees are vital for the health of plants and healthy look and caring regard for those viewing our property. People look at communities for home purchases. It is vital maintaining and healthy prosperous appearance, and watering is a major, is major to the process. Please consider giving water, watering discounts during drought periods. Thank you for your consideration." Now, having received that public comment as well, it is comment for the village board, it's not necessarily something that you would act on in doing, but because it was submitted in this form, I had it in advance. So we also read this at the Public Works Committee meeting, which would be appropriately where it'd be dealt at, which met before this meeting as well. This one was specifically asked to be read at the village board. So I have the ability to respond to this resident tomorrow, you know, via email, but that's the comment for tonight.
Any trustees have any comment? Again, it's Environmental Commission, they're always looking to conserve, and I know Mike Ramsey, Public Works Director, commented on that at the committee meeting, so...
Mayor, and I could add, I could add to that, as we, I touched on this earlier, just that while it's, it's nice to have a green lawn, the, the grass itself will handle a drought and will come back with rain. So I know the, the opinion of the Environmental Committee would be that there's really not a need to water, although we do like that. And then some people would never think of watering their lawns. And in the spring and in the fall, when the weather changes, the, the grass is hardy in this area and it does come back. So that's from our committee, who is a forester, and they pay attention to those things. It's not just my personal opinion, so...
Good. Thank you. And I think Public Works Director Ramsey also commented on getting the water from Lake Michigan, and that we're trying to conserve, and you only get so much
During a drought, yeah.
So, Manager May, if you could respond back?
I will, and that was the only public comment tonight.
All right, we'll move on. Reports. First report is mine, and it's always a pleasure to, and I consider it an honor, to, and to get the opportunity to swear in new officers. And I've been here 44, 45 years, and I've always admired and respected our officers and all first responders in this community. They have been above average, they are to the top, especially during this time now with all the unrest that's going on. I am very proud to say we have a very professional police department. And again, it's my honor tonight to swear in two officers. And I'd ask Chief Gunther if he has some comments.
Thank you, Mayor. It is, it is indeed a great night for the police department, to say that this night was a long time in the making. It would be a gross understatement. We have two very good and capable and excellent officers that we'd like to swear in tonight. They have huge potential, and they've had probably the most rocky of roads, journey to, to get to this point. So both Officer John D. Pasquale and Officer Brett Jensen were hired on January 1st of 2020. We are now, you know, 10 and a half months into the year, and we're now only finally getting around to the swearing in. This is our first pandemic COVID hiring experience, and I'll get into that in a, in a second. But, you know, even though it's been a long time in the making to get to the oath of office, this is very important to us. This is a sacred vow to the community and to ourselves that we will do everything that we can to protect people and property and, and serve the village and the state of Illinois to the best of our abilities. So although it's been a long time, it's very important, and we're happy to be landing at this spot tonight. Obviously, with a, with a COVID environment, we had logistical issues to work out. You know, we didn't want to do this without the board being mostly assembled and having people being allowed back into the galley. Normally, in a swearing in ceremony, we'd have the walls lined with all the other officers and staff members of the, the police department. I only have two representatives, plus former Chief Mulhern standing in the hallway. So it's all, it's all working out. We do have other officers back at the station after we wrap up here. The, both officers were hired in January, and they went to the Cook County Police Academy for a period of time until COVID hit, and they were sent back to the police station midway through their training. So that was a very unique experience because we didn't have, we didn't have a program for that. We didn't know what to do. It was, it was difficult because they were told, you know, you're, we can't train you, but, you know, you can't stay here. So we, we made good use of John and Brett back at the station. Fortunately, we were in the process of accreditation, so a lot of the things that we needed to have done around the station that were those jobs that, you know, needed to be done, but nobody had time to do them, we found people to do them. They became our two resident decontamination experts, and several times a day, they were going through the building with latex gloves and masks and squirt bottles of disinfectant, and they were hitting every single surface that they could. And, you know, personally, it was, it was actually a unique experience from my perspective because they spent the majority of their time on the second floor with us. And I got to know them personally, you know, much more than a lot of the new officers that get hired go to the academy and they're back on the street. So, so I would say that I probably know John and Brett better than I know some of the other people we've, we've hired recently because they spent, you know, a couple of months with us at the station. So once they were able to go back to the academy, they, they finally graduated on June 19th. They both went through the field training program, and I'm happy to announce that both of them will complete their field training program by the end of this week. And they will be full productive members of the police department come Monday morning. So, and not that they haven't been productive already, but they'll be on their own for the first time being productive. So having said all that, I will bring up Officer D. Pasquale to be sworn in by the mayor.
I do have to say before I swear you in that two of the trustees would have been here, but both would have medical issues, and they're better staying at home and participating soon. All right, so I'm gonna have you repeat after me, please, both of us. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, John D. Pasquale.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The laws of DuPage County.
The laws of DuPage County.
The Westmont Village Code Of Ordinances.
The Westmont Village Code Of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties for the office of police officer.
The duties for the office of police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Yeah, well, now, Mayor, the, the next job is the most important job that we have, and that will be performed by John's wife Maggie, and that's the pinning of the star. And they practice ahead of time, so this should take more than 10 minutes. Very good, all right. Play those two pictures next, and then we'll have an opportunity to...
The podium is yours.
First of all, I want to say thank you for, everybody for coming here tonight, especially my family and all our command staff. I want to start off by thanking a few people, the mayor and the village manager, the board of trustees, Chief Gunther, and all of our administrative chat, our staff, the deputy chiefs as well, the fire and police commissioners for, you know, guiding us through this journey. We've had the opportunity to be trained by an excellent group of field training officers, and throughout the past 12 weeks, we've been exposed to many different styles of policing. And I'm sure that they're ready to see us go on our own at this point, but it's really been an excellent experience with all of them. I can definitely say that the training of new officers from Westmont Police Department is second to none. I want to thank my family, specifically my wife and daughter, my parents, my sisters, and my mother and father-in-law. When I was talking to my wife about a year ago, I said, you know, "What, what would you think if I was a police officer?" And she said, "Well, I don't know, why don't you give it a shot?" And I said, "Okay." And for me, I can remember, man, probably going back to when I was 10 or 11 years old, watching Law &amp; Order: Special Victims Unit with my older sister. My younger sister was still a little too little for that. And a lot of police movies with my dad, and just always wanting to be one of the good guys, and wanting to step up and do the right thing, and take care of little kids and people who are in need. And for me, I've been lucky enough to be selected by this excellent department. And I, I just want to say that I look forward to a career of helping others and protecting those who cannot protect themselves and enforcing the laws of this village and the state of Illinois. Additionally, I want to say thank you very much for the opportunity. Thank you for the faith and trust that you have in me. I promise I won't let you down. I'll do, I'll hold up the oath of this office to the best of my abilities. So thank you very much again to everybody for coming. Thank you for all your support.
And as chief, as they're gonna exit, and we'll get our next officer in, yesterday in the news, or the day before, we had an officer from Lisle rescued a boy in a burning house. And if it wasn't for that officer, something tragic would have happened. So again, that's just one of the many duties, because he was mentioning the safety of children. And I think you're usually the first one on the scene, and you react to whatever is necessary. So, and the other thing is, he's got to make sure he keeps the podium when you're around, because once you get up there, you'll never give it back to him.
Well, we'll see if Officer Jensen can give him a run for his money.
All right.
And actually, I think we just get right to the swearing in, because I think I already said most of my remarks. So Mayor, if you can get Officer Jensen up, and see if we can power through this, this round of swearing in.
Please, all of us, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Brett Jensen.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The laws of DuPage County.
The laws of DuPage County.
The Westmont Village Code Of Ordinances.
The Westmont Village Code Of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties for the office of police officer.
The duties for the office of police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
And pinning Officer Jensen's badge on will be his wife Hannah. No pressure.
Hello, everyone. Thank you again. As John said, thank you all for being here. I would also like to thank the village ma, the mayor, manager, the trustees, police chief, and the rest of the police staff, the police, fire and police commissioners, for the opportunity to work as a police officer for the village of Westmont. I would also like to thank my family for being here and being so supportive of me, especially my wife, because I know I can be a little stressful to her sometimes. Remember the first time, when I first told her I was getting officially hired on, she was like, about time. One name I would really like to throw out there is my brother Darren. He can't be here today because he unfortunately passed away earlier this year. He was a big supporter of me trying to become a police officer. He was a deputy chief for Darian Woodridge Fire Department. He did try convincing me to be a fireman, but I was like, no, I'd rather be a police officer. If it wasn't for him, I probably wouldn't be where I'm at today, especially with the help of my family as well, but especially him, especially because he was a thorn in my side. So I look forward to the career as a police officer and keeping the people of Westmont safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, congratulations.
All right, back to the station, you guys go. And while everybody's leaving, I just wanted to mention that we hired these two fine officers, and, and I do want to mention that the Fire and Police Commission are still in the process of hiring five additional police officers for the police department. That process is ongoing. It's a long process, as you can tell. And we've currently exhausted the current eligibility list. They are quickly working on getting another eligibility list up and running, and hopefully we'll have a few more people hired by the first of the year in that time period. As a mayor, as you mentioned at the beginning, it is a difficult time in law enforcement right now, and finding quality people is becoming more and more difficult. And, you know, right now, it feels like it's, they're all diamonds in the rough, because, because less people want to be police officers than when I started, you know, 25 years ago. So, you know, we're, we're moving along, and, and I can promise you that the Westmont police officers are as professional as you can get, and we serve 24/7 to make sure that the, our community is safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Again, special thanks to the commission. I know the Police and Fire Commission Chief mentioned them, but they've been working countless hours to not only get to this point, but they're looking at hiring additional officers that we're short. So I want to thank them publicly. All right, we'll move on. And again, as everybody sees, we're still in a hybrid virtual village meetings. So tonight we have three trustees and a clerk here, and the other three trustees are zooming in. And at this point, I'm gonna call on Chief Riley to give a COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. In the state of Illinois, today we had 2,257 new cases, along with 30 deaths. Out of those 30 deaths, three of those are DuPage County residents. Currently in DuPage County, we're at 17,091 cases, along with 554 deaths. We are sitting at 555 total cases in the village of Westmont, which is the 60559 ZIP code. And we've had 23 new cases in the last 14 days since I've updated the board and the public. Our seven-day positivity rate in Illinois has gone down to 3.5%, which is great. However, we're still a little higher than that in DuPage County. We're sitting at 4.3%. So we need to continue to help with social distancing, continue to put those face coverings and face masks on. You know, I know numerous schools are talking about trying to get back to some type of hybrid learning. You know, very nervous about that a little bit, but, you know, we certainly need to continue to do the right thing in the village of Westmont, and continue to cover our faces when we're out in public. That's all I got for you, Mayor, unless there's any questions from you or the board.
Anybody question? No? Thank you, Chief. I'm gonna update on the 100th Anniversary Committee. We have a Future of Westmont project. Every year, we've been doing murals, deplicting certain areas of the village, and right now, we're asking students to send us their thoughts about Westmont's future. The details and sign-up information are on our website. Sister City, myself, Larry Forsberg, and Tom Mulhern sent a video thank you and congratulations on the double 10 to our Sister City. Also, Shinchu County has mailed, has mailed or sent us PPE goods, which includes 12,000 medical masks, 1,000 cloth masks, and 500 protective gowns. So we really appreciate their thinking of us. And tomorrow, uh, tomorrow, Saturday, we all experienced the passing of Jim Addington, who has been involved in this community for years. Former mayor, he was a sitting trustee at this time. We're gonna have a ceremony honoring him on Saturday, which is his birthday. We will be announcing the naming of our downtown fountain and plaza in honor of Jim. Due to our social distancing, we haven't over-promoted it, but it is public, is welcome. And just please stay socially distant and wear a mask. But we're excited about taking this opportunity to recognize Jim, Jim's service. He was known as Mr. Lion. He's been so active in Alliance Club in this community. He's been active in commissions and elected official. He was the mayor during the 75th anniversary celebration. So Jim's meant a lot to this community, and we want to honor him the best we can. So Saturday morning, 10 o'clock, we'll be announcing that to the public. And that's all I have. Clerk Simmski?
I just want to remind everyone that the candidate packets are available for pickup from the clerk's office. The positions that are up for election in April 2021 are mayor, clerk, three village trustees, and three library trustees. And as soon as you get the package, you can make copies of your petitions, and you can go out and start collecting your signatures. So we held it till the day before, and then people could pick them up. But please come in and get one if you're interested.
And those packets will explain everything.
Yes, they will. So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Nero, Public Works Committee. While Trustee Nero is getting connected again, I'll turn to Trustee Little.
How's that, Mayor?
Oh, you're on now. Go ahead, Trustee Nero.
Not sure what happened there, but I was unmuted. First and foremost, we celebrated a 20-year anniversary of Jim Burke, one of our employees. We're very thankful for his commitment to Westmont and all the work that he continues to do. He's a great asset to the village. And even more importantly, he's also a Selective Employee of the Year. So what a week for him, and a year for him, more importantly. Thank you, Jim. We also ran through quite a few updates on a lot of projects. I'll give a brief highlight. The new village fueling center, our current fueling center, due to some issues with some, due to some issues that we're attending to, is gonna be closing around Halloween, which in the meantime, our village staff will be using P cars and local gas stations to acquire fuel, until our new facility gets opened up, which target date would be next summer. So we're looking forward to that. Moving on, our public, new public works facility. I think this is an exciting update. We're right now, we're at 85% complete. I know I said this last time, but if you haven't driven by, please do. Check it out. It's amazing to see how fast it went up. We're already gonna be starting on the tarozzo flooring next week. The fireproofing is done. All bathrooms and retaining wall work will be completed this week, and furniture will be starting to be delivered next week. So we're really looking forward to seeing that happen. We are still on pace to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony here in the next couple of months. So more to come on that. 61st Street and Richmond Detention Basement is nearly done. The final trees will be planted next week. And our ever-popular Alley Sea Project, the pervious concrete for the first phase is completed, and the bricks will be installed and completed by the 25th. The second phase will begin around Monday, October 5th. Moving right on... Moving right on, we are trimming and addressing some base failure issues in the alley internally. Staff did bring to the board's attention on some issues that we might want to discuss in a future date on some complete restructuring of some of the alleys. Also, got a brief update from Street Division on cleanup from our recent relatively large storm we had, and I was surprised the year that five Parkway trees completely ripped out and over 60 complaints of hanging limbs, and our team went above and beyond to help clean up and did a good job at that. So, we're thankful for everybody and streets that helped. Quick sinkhole update, for those of you who have seen us out there, we have 16 repaired to date so far, so you may see a few more happen before the end of the year or end of the season, I should say. Moving on to Water Division, main update I felt for sharing is we had six waterman breaks recently, which, you know, is a little unique, but I know our team handled them really well, and we appreciate them. Sometimes that goes under the radar, but that, in my mind, is an emergency service when there's a waterman break, and I know the team does a really good job, so I appreciate all those efforts. Engineering Division, we had a quick update on the North Lincoln Parking Lot Project. That is going to be coming to Village Board for final approval and hopefully ready to break down come spring. Quick update on the train tracks. Metro and BNSF are going to be replacing the pedestrian grates, gates, excuse me, starting Monday. So, expect that to come. There might be some minor interference with traffic. However, we expect no closures during this construction, which I think is impressive. And Facility talked a little bit about UV protection in village buildings and upgrading our filters on our HVAC systems. So, we expect to get a little more information on that. Any of those upgrades would qualify for the CARES Act, which would be federally reimbursed funds. And that is all I have on Public Works Committee, Mayor, and that is all I have for my items. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, trustee Nero. Trustee Little, Administration Finance Committee Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Please bear with me, I lost my voice last week due to not COVID. It was more the cold weather overnight caught me off guard, so I sound a little squeaky today. The Administration Finance Committee, the next meeting will be October the 8th at 4:30 in this office. There is a Halloween costume contest. Everyone is invited to visit westmonevents.com and participate in our modified Wicked West Fest Costume Contest. People can either take photo in their costumes and send it in, or you can sign up to have our WSEC costumed kooky characters, visit your home, and take pictures of costume contestants and drop off a Halloween goodie bag. All photos will be posted online for public voting. And our last item is the Halloween House Decorating Contest. Participants can either send in up to five pictures of your entry, or the Special Events Office will send people to your home to take photos. So, visit westmonevents.com for more information. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you. And to go along with the Halloween, there's, we haven't determined how we're going to address that. It's not being canceled, but we might come up with some suggestions.
We're still working on that one. We haven't heard anything from the Governor yet.
Good. Well, thank you. Trustee Marie Johanna Guzzo, Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I want to let everyone know that our next Public Safety Committee meeting will be November 5th at 4:30, Village Hall and probably hybrid. Police Department will be hosting a paper shredding event with Westmont Business AccuShred. This is a fundraiser for Special Olympics Illinois. The shred event is scheduled for October 17th, which is a Saturday, from 9:00 AM till noon, 500 North Cast. And then I also want to take the opportunity to congratulate our two new police officers. Sorry I wasn't there to meet you in person, but welcome to the village. And then last but not least, I just want to remind everybody, when you see sirens, when you hear sirens, when you see lights, please pull over. I was actually out Saturday, we were running some errands, and I see the emergency vehicles coming through. Please, I just want to remind everybody to please pull to the right for sirens and lights. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We'll move over to trustee Barker from Environmental Improvement Committee and Westmont First.
Thank you, Mayor. Westmont First next meeting will be October 19th at 6:00 PM, and then an update on the Census 2020 will be completed September 30th. Thank you to everybody that has responded. Currently, we're sitting at 75.1% participation, and then the official numbers will be available sometime in December. The EIC Committee, the Environmental Improvement Committee, had a meeting on September 5th here in Village Hall. We had a guest speaker that talked to us about solar panels and solar energy and gave us really a good foundation so that everybody understands that on the committee. And then from that, we'll continue to educate ourselves and bring that to the community so that solar panels and environmental practices can be ongoing here in the community. We also were able to support the pumpkin composting program this year. We're going to be able to do that because it's an outdoor event. Several of the committee members are volunteering to do that. It's going to be probably drive-up, grab-and-go. We'll take the pumpkins out of your car as you, you know, pull up to the container, take care of all that. But we're happy to have that event. That'll be on November 7th at 9:00 AM to noon in the library parking lot. We urge people to take advantage of that and compost their pumpkins. Of course, you have to remove anything that you would have inside that pumpkin, whether it's lights or candles or decorations. And then also, if you do use Halloween lights for that time, some people are, you know, kind of taking advantage of decorating their homes, especially maybe this year, if there's fun things to do with your children while you're quarantining, you might go over the top, and if your lights fail, please hold those for the holiday lights recycling, which will be followed up shortly thereafter for Halloween and Christmas. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. One quick question. I understand that the previous census, the total was, we're past that total the last time, right?
Yeah, we passed that total, and we did get that number. Manager May sent that out to us. I just cannot remember what it is, so I'm not going to repeat it.
I don't remember.
But we surpassed that, and I want to say that Jenny Beavir, our here office staff, has done a great job encouraging all the members of Westmont First to get out and participate and help us reach the community to engage them. And the PR stuff that's coming out of communications, the social media and everything has been excellent. And I know she's done a ton of work on this and really, I'll say, pushed us because it was, you know, such a long process, it was hard to get started. And then once we got started, she made sure that we carried through on the commitments that we made. So, thank you to Jenny, and thank you to Westmont First for doing that work.
Still got a week.
Still got a week.
Yes. So, if you haven't, please respond. Trustee Harold Berry III, Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've recently canceled our next meeting, and also the planning and zoning has been canceled. But planning and zoning staff continues to work on many, many projects and permits and so forth as they come in, and the Economic Development Committee team is still meeting on a weekly basis with Larry and the Chamber and their economic partnership. So, I'll kind of just combine the two, and we'll work our way, you know, through the community and kind of start at Ogden in 83. We have a lot of activity going on on Pasquenelli Drive. We have the continued redevelopment of the old Rockwell, and we also have proposals on a new medical facility that's looking to subdivide along the old Pasquenelli. Ogden Avenue continues its reconstruction. I know to people that drive it, it seems like it's taking forever, but it is moving along. You can see the median beautification is going along, along the Oakwood side. We do remind everyone that the auto mile is open for business, and we encourage people to continue to visit the auto mile. Moving farther down Ogden, we have the Medical Center is moving along and really just rapidly coming along there. It's gone vertical, and windows are in, doors are in. We have the possibility of Ogden-Lincoln Mercury expanding to the old Boston Market location. And on Cass Avenue, we have the Dream Town Homes. They're into their second phase going along. Nature's Best is continuing to work with their parking lot redevelopment. We have, in the first block, of course, on Quincy Street Station, we have the Holiday Project moving, and I know everyone's excited to see that. I know that we've seen a lot of activity on Quincy Street now, the long-awaited building that sat there for, I think we've said over a decade vacant on Quincy Street, has now is working with staff on pulling permits, and we're seeing activity there, which is just great news. Uncle Bubbs continues to thrive in the moving south. And then, of course, 63rd Street is just exploding everywhere, from the Mariano's Gas Station. It's rumored that the Starbucks may have either opened today or possibly tomorrow. The mystery grocery store looks like they're ready to hang their mystery sign any day. And again, we continue to see development throughout the residential areas, permits being pulled at record pace. And again, just to piggyback on Marie and the rest of the board, welcome to the new police officers. I know trustee Addington was always so excited to get our new hires, so I think of him tonight at any time I see new police officers or paramedics or Fire Department hired. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. A lot going on. Moving on, items to be removed from the consent agenda. Any trustees see anything they'd like removed? Seeing none, I'd ask manager May to please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Short consent agenda tonight. First is Village Board Minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting held September 10th, 2020. It's followed by Finance Ordinance Number 10, the aggregate amount of $1,130,386.03. We have two purchase orders. First one is DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau, $34,239. Represents the municipal contribution to the DuPage CBB for our fiscal year '21. Second purchase order is Crown Industries, $400,000. This is an encumbering purchase order for the construction work at the new fueling center that the Public Works described in better detail earlier at the Public Works Committee meeting. The two purchase orders are totaled $434,239. Brings the total of purchase orders with Finance Ordinance Number 10 to $1,564,625.03. And that's the entire consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve is read?
Motion by Blew.
Second, Barker.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please. Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Berry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to new business. A, Engineering Services, Community Development Department, EZA. Board to consider ordinance approving an agreement with EZA Engineering, PLLC, for Professional Engineering Services. Now, either have manager May or Director Sylvester.
I'd like to initiate it if I could, and actually, I'm going to speak to the first two items, which the second item would be Engineering Services for Primera Engineering. We have certain, well, just engineering staff functions that occur in the village. They can be simplified as saying there's the functions that we do for review in the Community Development Department that constitutes new development and permit work and reviewing those document site plans against all applicable laws and ordinances. And then we have the village engineer type work that would be done, and we call it the Public Works Engineer or the Village Engineer. And the both cases, the staff engineers that were on in Community Development have since left employment with us, as did the Village Engineer was the assistant, I'm sorry, the Deputy Public Works Director, who, you know, recently took employment elsewhere as well. So, the first item, the Community Development Department or this EZA Engineering, is for the services that are in the Community Development Department. I suppose I could leave it there. It's the individual that we know that was already kind of working for us in this capacity. It's contract personnel, and the, just, you know, not through the same employer that it was before. Otherwise, the same services, essentially.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second to approve on the question. Seeing none, roll call, please. Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Berry.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to new business B. Engineering Services. Amended Public Works Department Agreement, Primera. Board to consider an ordinance approving an amended agreement for Professional Engineering Services with Primera Engineers LTD. Manager May.
So, this is the other one, the Public Works Engineer or the Village Engineering function. It's called an amended agreement because we've already entered into agreement with this individual or this company to use this individual for these services. We executed this one first, so he had some duties and responsibilities in his job description or scope of services that are now being replaced by the last agreement that you just approved. So, this is an amended agreement to better separate the different functions between the two engineering consultants.
Do I have a motion to approve? Motion to approve, Little.
Second.
Nero.
Good.
Motion made second to approve. Comments, questions? Manager May did a good job explaining. I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Berry.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business C, Increase of Available Tobacco License. Board to consider ordinance increasing the number of available tobacco license by one to allow for the issuance of a tobacco license to Roundy's Illinois LLC, ABA, Mariano's Fuel Center, 140 West 63rd Street. And I'd have Deputy Liquor Commissioner Mulhern to give us some more information.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Village Board. Roundy's Illinois LLC, DBA, Mariano's Fuel Center, has applied for tobacco license for their newly opened gas station located at 140 West 63rd Street. They are seeking a license to meet their customer needs. The sale of tobacco, this will only be for sale of tobacco products only. Vape and related products will not be sold. The general grocery store manager oversees the operation of the gas station tobacco sales. Employees receive training and various computer checks to prevent underage sales. Clear up a couple of things. This will be for a Class A tobacco license, which will be, allows for the sale of tobacco in gasoline stations, and I'll let the village attorney correct me if I'm wrong, but does not allow for sale of tobacco in the grocery store and is not Mariano's intention to sell tobacco in the grocery store, only at the gas station only. We have on standby, if we need to, the area manager, Sean Nelson, who's monitoring the board meeting right now and can remote in if we have any questions. But they've ensured me that they will not sell any vape products because Kroger, their parent company, nationally prevented any sales from any of their stores. So, that's not an issue to be concerned today. Who knows what happens in the future, but we can cross that if and when that happens. I did a background check, did an onsite vision. One thing to arrest the concerns for underage sales. Each employee out at the center does go away electronic training provided by Roundy's or by Mariano's, just their own training, as well as the point-of-sale practice of a purchaser, a customer, has to provide an ID. The ID is scanned by the register and provides checks of, you know, proof of age. And if they do not have, if a customer does not have an ID, they will not make the sale. They will deny the sale at that time. And the area manager and also the general manager, Jason Herbert for our Mariano's, is very much aware of the need to ensure of underage sales and sale of tobacco. Just a reminder, sale of tobacco is now 21 years old, no longer 18.
Do I have a motion to increase the available tobacco license? Do I have a motion to increase the available tobacco license?
A move, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second to approve. Questions?
Yes, sir.
Trustee Barker?
This is probably for John. You know, John, we put this language in here, or it's in there somewhere, that vape and related products will not be sold. And when that's done in this situation with an agreement with them, if it's legal and lawful for Mariano's to sell that, can they move to that without coming back to us? Or does it require them? Because they agreed to it here today and we all agreed to that, do they have to come back for any change?
And that's a very good question and something that Deputy Liquor Commissioner Mulhern and I discussed today. As far as the ordinance that's before you tonight, you are just voting to make a tobacco license available. You're not imposing any restrictions on the license. That would be up to the mayor when he signs off and issues the license. Normally and historically, the village does not regulate or prohibit the sale of vape products because there's no prohibition by the state of Illinois and you don't have authority to do so, other than through zoning authority to say where standalone tobacco or vape sales can be located. I discussed with Mr. Mulhern that since Roundy's is in agreement that they will not sell vape products, that we can put that as a condition on their tobacco license and say by agreement, no vape or related products will be sold at this location. If they ever wish to change their mind on that, they can come in and seek an amendment to that license restriction.
So it does work?
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
However, it works because this is by agreement. I think if another gas station came in and said, yeah, we want to sell tobacco and vape products just like everyone else, because it's not regulated in any manner by the state, I don't think you have the authority to prohibit that.
Yeah, thank you.
Good point, trustee Barker. Any other comments?
Just a question, and I think this goes back, and maybe this might be for Bruce Sylvester, but I thought originally when they had proposed that gas station, they were not going to have any sales and they said that they might have a soda machine or two as far as the vending. So again, I thought that was the process going in.
Trustee Barry, I do recall, because I was here when they made their presentation for the gas station overall, I did inquire as if they're going to be planning on selling any type of alcohol out there because they have a liquor license. And the answer was no. I don't recall the answer when asked about tobacco. I know I was specific about alcohol. I don't recall asking or an answer on tobacco.
Any other comments? I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barry? Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business D, Sign Variants, McGrath Lexus of Westmont. Board to consider ordinance granting the following approvals for McGrath Lexus of Westmont, five hundred East Ogden Avenue in Westmont. One, a zoning code variance to exceed the number and location of wall signs for an open sales lot located at four seven oh East Ogden Avenue, commonly known as five hundred East Ogden Avenue in the B two General Business District. And two, a zoning code variance to exceed the aggregate size of all signs for an open sales lot located at four seventy East Ogden Avenue, commonly known as five hundred East Ogden Avenue in the B two General Business District. And I'd ask Community Development Director Sylvester to give us some additional information.
So very briefly, McGrath Lexus on East Ogden has invested a lot of money in their business on East Ogden, and that includes renovations to keep current with their corporate requirements. And they're trying to upgrade the appearance and the look of their facility. Part of that includes some additional signage. And the signage that they want, you can see it in the materials that were included in your packet, are above and beyond what our zoning ordinance would normally allow. Planning and zoning reviewed it at a public hearing. There was no opposition. And planning and zoning recommended approval. If you look at the packets, I think you'll agree, it's an attractive appearance to their business on Ogden Avenue.
Thank you. And what I've learned over the last several years is that when the corporate tells the franchise owner that they have to, and we, I guess we have a representative here, if you want to come and introduce yourself, you can come up to podium and then, in case there's any questions. But my understanding is that corporate tells the local franchises they've got a year or two to implement different changes. So go ahead and introduce yourself and...
Hi, well, thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Jimmy Tran, general manager of McGrath Lexus of Westmont. Been with the facility for the past fifteen years or so here in Westmont, but served in this general manager role for the past four years. And you're exactly right, Mr. Mayor. Part of the franchise agreement and the dealer agreement was Lexus is doing a nationwide update to the look of their facility. And part of the look was an architectural element that kind of juts off of the building that's attached to the building with the Lexus emblems attached to it that we're trying to adhere to. So, you know, any questions, I'd be more than happy to, you know, answer.
I do entertain a motion to approve as read.
Motion to approve, Little?
Nero.
Second, Nero. Any comments? Trustee Barker?
Yeah, I would just, you know, I really see the need to do that, and I think it might, you know, if you look at signage and, you know, capturing people's attention, there's so much going on in the auto mile there and the car corridor that, you know, there's talk of other dealerships giving facelifts and things, but I think they need that and, you know, know that we're grateful that the dealerships are here in Westmont and thriving and congratulations on your renovation.
Yeah, thank you. It's, got through it very fast. Sun gods were on our side and the weather, the rain gods, I should say, were on our sides and we had some good weather. But we initially had planned out six months of renovation and glad to report that we wrapped it up in ninety-one days on that. So we're planning our grand opening and, you know, tentatively have an October thirteenth date for a grand reopening at the facility there. But it's, everyone is welcome to come and its invitations will be sent out very soon.
Good. Any other comments? I do have to say that it's a great appearance. It's well done.
Thank you.
So I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Motion passes. We look forward to the grand reopening.
Yes, we look forward to having you there. Thank you very much, Jimmy.
Thank you.
New business E, Lincoln Municipal Parking Lot at twenty-five, twenty-nine, and thirty-three North Lincoln. Board to consider ordinances to allow the village of Westmont to construct a municipal parking lot on properties located at twenty-five, twenty-nine, and thirty-three North Lincoln Street, Westmont, as follows. One, a special use permit to allow the construction of a publicly owned parking lot in the R three single-family detached residential district to serve adjoining and nearby business districts. Two, a zoning code variance to allow parking in the front yard, side yard, and in the front of the setback line. Three, a waiver from the Westmont engineering standards for stall size. Four, a site and landscape plan for the construction of a publicly owned parking lot in the R three single-family detached residential district. And five, a preliminary plat of consolidation to consolidate three lots at twenty-five, twenty-nine, and thirty-three North Lincoln Street, located in the R three single-family detached residential district. Manager May?
Mayor and everyone, this is a public capital improvement project. It's a public parking lot to be installed on North Lincoln Street at these addresses. It is immediately on the backside of the alley that divides the central business district with the residential zoning district. The project will construct a public parking lot, and I guess to simplify this, instead of seeking a rezoning for, to change the zoning district to B one, leaving it in the residential area, all of these special use and variances and zoning code waivers apply. So that's what this was. We are, it is our own project, but we still went through the planning and zoning process like any other applicant would, and both five of these items were approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I can go into any amount of detail you want about the project itself, but the item is to grant these variances to allow us to construct this parking lot.
I think we discussed this in committee. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Little?
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second to approve. Any, trustee Barker?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just, I'm happy to see that this thing is moving along kind of at an accelerated pace. I can't remember the year of the last parking study, but it's always referred to as we had a parking study done, and I, what is it, ten years ago, longer?
At least.
At least. And then, you know, going forward with the progress that we made, there was so much talk at planning and zoning with future development and maybe the shifting in parking and all of that. So whatever we do in the CBD, I would have staff always pay attention to growing parking needs and looking towards convenience as we make changes down there. And how can we make it convenient? Because we hear about these spots being shifted and while we're adding more spots, we are still taking away, trading some convenience for some of those smaller businesses, which will get, you know, a crowded downtown is a space where, you know, it's a place where all the parking spots are taken. But then that is also something that you have to continue to improve and make sure that we're always looking at that. But great job on this one. I like what we heard at committee and hopefully we'll be able to utilize it soon.
Any other comments?
Well, just that, you know, the, this is, at this location is kind of a long time in the making and this might not even just be the end of it, but what trustee Barker was referring to, to anybody listening, is that the timing is subject to a potential loss of public parking that is right on Cass Avenue, and that would be for other reasons for another development. But we wanted to certainly stay ahead of that so that we are, you know, always in addition and not going backwards at any point.
Any other? I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business F, trustee appointment. Board to consider motion approving Mayor Gunter's appointment of a trustee to fulfill the term left vacant by the passing of trustee Addington. And I'll explain this process a little bit. I've asked the trustees to submit names and we had four finalists, and I've asked the trustees to evaluate it and rank them. And I'm proud to say that one person was at the top of everybody's list, and that person is Frank Brady. And that's my, my appointment is for Frank Brady to fulfill the term left vacant by the passing of trustee Addington. And again, I entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little?
Motion's been made in second to approve on the question. I guess I'll follow up and say that Frank will be sworn in in two weeks at our meeting and then he officially will be seating up here with us and will be, Frank has, and we'll let, at that time Frank will have an opportunity to say some words about yourself, but Frank is a longtime resident and a super volunteer in this community. So if anybody else has any comments, if not, I have a motion, I mean, a roll call. Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Motion passes. And congratulations, Frank. We look forward to working with you in a couple weeks. Miscellaneous, does anybody have anything they'd like to add? Larry, anybody?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Trustee Barry?
I get nervous in my report, and the most important things that I wanted to cover I missed. So if I could just point out that the Nattatorium is having the ribbon cutting next week, the long-awaited Nattatorium, you know, we could talk probably, you know, hours about it, but that is finally having the ribbon cutting next week. And also, wanted to thank staff, especially Spencer Parker. He's really working on trying to hone in the grants that are available to our businesses. And we have some real creative things that are coming and really a unique way we're hoping to help the restaurants coming down the road. And again, to all the staff, but especially Spencer, for really getting creative and trying to help our small businesses. So many times we hear on the outside, hey, the government guys don't get it. Well, I'll tell you, in this situation, the village really gets it and they're really looking to help our small businesses. So those were my two points that I wanted to make, and that's what I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm glad you brought it up. It's front page of the suburban life today at Nattatorium. So it's a great facility. We're all looking forward to opening. Any other miscellaneous? Seeing none, we do not have an executive session, so I need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn, Nero.
Second, Little?
Motion been made in second to adjourn. I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
And trustee Barry?
Yes.
Again, I thank everybody for attending. It's been a wonderful evening when we swore in some new officers, and again, this meeting is adjourned.